Call the Wednesday, June 24, 2020, Board of Trustees Special Meeting to order because we have the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor Angelo.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Present.
Trustee Caravus.
I am here.
Trustee Lowell.
Here.
Trustee Wa.
He's trying.
IT issues.
There he is.
There he goes. You muted Canyon.
I apologize, I had some IT issues, I did a reboot right at 5 o'clock, so.
No worries, I'm just taking roll call, Trustee Wa.
Present.
Trustee Rogan.
Present.
And Trustee Miller.
Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An opportunity for all of us to participate in a reflective moment of silence. Thank you. I spoke with Administrator Simonson, item four or five have been covered last night, but I'll ask for either an amendment to the agenda or an approval of the agenda, with the exception of those two items, whichever the Board of Trustees prefers.
I move that we approve the agenda with the exception of items four and five.
Do I have a second?
Second, that.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda stated by Mayor Pro Tem Browning. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Caravus.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
And I noted Trustee Miller joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Aye, yay.
Okay. Under General Business, Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution 2020 into the record?
Resolution 2020-101, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Lyons, authorizing the Town Administrator to execute an agreement for the allocation and sharing of the CARES Act funding through Boulder County.
Madam Administrator, do you have a discussion item in regard to this also?
I do, I have a couple of things, I'd like to give a little quick background on this funding, and then talk a little bit about an additional need that has surfaced that I think we may want to allocate these funds toward. So first of all, this resolution is coming before you tonight, it was time sensitive, so we appreciate your ability to meet. As everyone knows, both the Congress had established what they are calling the CARES Act for Corona relief to municipalities and counties, and it was a $150 billion fund. Of that, once Governor Polis declared a disaster, an emergency here in Colorado, it opened up our ability to be eligible for that funding. In the state of Colorado, it is going to be administered by the Department of Local Affairs, who is one of our partners. And what they are doing is they are allocating, they allocated the first, the first, I'm trying to remember now, I didn't have that in my memo. The first pot of money, the first tranche of money actually went to our largest counties and municipalities, and they were given funding off the top to take care of their countywide issues due to their populations. This phase of the CARES Act is actually going out to the rest of the counties and municipalities, of which Boulder County is going to be receiving $27,889,758. Your county is able to accept that funding if they can show a collaborative effort amongst their communities within their county to find a way to distribute those funds equitably and where the greatest need is. So Boulder County has a strong history of really working together collaboratively in these situations, especially as demonstrated by the 2013 flood. And so, we quickly were able to get together with the 1, 2, 3, 10 communities in Boulder County, and came up with the recommendation you're being presented with tonight. And that is that Boulder County would keep 55% of the $27 plus million to take care of the countywide issues that they had to represent the entire community, such as the public health, the hotlines, all of those types of countywide activities. The remaining 45% of that money would be divided even, or would be divided to each of the municipalities based on population. And so, that is attached as part of the agreement that was in your packet. There's a letter to Rick Garcia, who is the Executive Director of the Department of Local Affairs, saying that we have met as a group, and that we are all agreeing to this formula, and the guiding principles, which were also in your packet, of the intent of these funds. And if the Board is in agreement tonight, it would mean that Lyons would get 0.7% of the funds, which is the equivalent of $92,264, to use toward COVID-related expenses between March 1st of 2020 and December 30th of 2020. And so, it doesn't, you can use it toward expenses you've already incurred, or you can use it toward anticipated expenses and programs related to COVID. So, this resolution would authorize Lyons, would authorize, actually, the Town Administrator, because we're still trying to get all this put together. But it would allow me to sign the agreement on your behalf, accepting those funds and saying how we will submit the request for reimbursement and how they will be used. Now, at this point, we don't have to state exactly how they are going to be used, that will be ongoing discussions with all of the members of our collaborative. But our initial discussions, everything that we have discussed as a Board would be eligible. All of the different park-related expenses, extra duty expenses, staffing, if it created overtime, is eligible. And then, any programs we choose to put together between now and December. So, this resolution would allow us to be part of the collaborative to accept these funds as eligible and seek reimbursement for them.
Any questions for Administrator Simonson? Trustee Wa.
Do we have an estimate of how much we've spent that could qualify for $30,000 since March 1st?
We have done that very broadly, we've had staff tracking their time since March 13th. And it's really not been very much, because if it's your regular hours, you can't count it, only overtime hours. I would say to date, it is probably less than $10,000.
But that doesn't include any special signage we made for the parks?
We do, we have a lot of the signs we've made in-house, but we have had some made more professionally. And if you accept these funds, we'll probably continue to take that route. Unfortunately, our local sign maker, who we always used, is not able to get the materials he's needed, so we've had to go to Longmont and Boulder to get our signs made. But I would anticipate, knowing, just watching all the trends happening, that this is going to be ever-changing over the course of the rest of this year, and signs are probably gonna have to change with it.
Any further questions?
I do need to fill out an application online to the Department of Local Affairs as an individual agency as well, that we're opting into the program. So, that would be the next step after this happens tonight, and that needs to happen, I think, before the end of the month.
No further questions, comments? At this time, I'd certainly entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020-10.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
There's been a motion in three seconds to Resolution 2020-10. Could we have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Caravus.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee Wa.
He said it.
Aye.
And Trustee Roger.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Administrator, you had another issue you wanted to bring before the Board of Trustees.
I do, it's related to this same topic. How quickly things change from last night to today, we all know that this is an ever-moving situation. And last night, we had some discussions about activities in the parks and how to potentially move forward with, trying to get that better contained. Today, we got the Seventh Amendment to the Safer at Home Order, with some new regulations and guidelines for different types of businesses. And I also had three different staff in my office in absolute tears and breakdown over how to handle what's happening in the parks. Although the weekend was what we anticipated, Monday and Tuesday of this week, and today as well, were absolutely just the same as any other weekend. And so, if you know the normal kind of course of activity in our parks, our weekends are very, very busy. And then, our park hosts have time during the week to kind of recoup, pick up all the little litter, get the bathrooms really well done, you know, kind of just regenerate for the next weekend. What they told me was, weekends, weekdays are not like weekends, and the weekends are like holidays. And they are not getting any downtime, you know, to get the trash, to get things that are broken taken care of. Last night, Bone Park was, the bathrooms were totally, I'm not gonna call it vandalized though, that's probably the correct term, they were rampaged. They brought in all sorts of construction pipes and stuff from the site and put in there, the floors were covered with dirt, they stole the fire extinguishers, there was no permanent damage done, just extra work for the park hosts again. And they were pretty discouraged by that, they asked if they could start to lock the bathrooms. I said absolutely, they're not needed for campers, I said lock them at dusk, open them at dawn. So, I've told them they could go ahead and do that. Over at Laverne Johnson, the park host told me that they're seeing the crowds are becoming more and more disrespectful. They're saying this week, a whole different behavior on Monday and Tuesday than what they've been seeing is a lot of what appear to be college students in CU Boulder t-shirts coming to the river, which is unusual. So, apparently with Boulder Creek colors, they've found Lyons. That concerns me, knowing, you know, this big surge we're having over in Boulder right now with that population. But the park hosts actually told me that they are feeling, we dread going into our home. And that they are feeling nervous for their safety, both from a COVID perspective and from a physical safety perspective. They said, we feel outnumbered, disrespected. They said of the recycling they're picking up, they think over 50% of the recycling is alcohol-related bottles, which no alcohol is allowed. People, they're asking people not to smoke, and they're disregarding that. And so, they just were really frustrated. And so, you know, of course, let them vent, and then we talked about some strategies. And so, what I would like to ask the Board, and I think you'll be on board with this, is I want to try another step with the parks, especially Laverne Johnson. And that would be, Laverne Johnson can be used by reservation only. You can reserve a picnic table for up to 10, or a shelter for up to 25. You can reserve a campsite or an RV site. That's it. Looking at that, that's still a lot of people, it's about 400 people. But it should allow enough, enough spacing that people could actually, the campers who are paying for it to be there can actually enjoy their stay. People might be divided up a little more than they are currently, because right now, the shelters have not been in use. So, you know, people are really tight. They have opened up water parks up to 50%, so if we turn on our splash pad, that might separate some people to be at the splash pad, and some at the stream, and some at the swimming hole. But I think we have to try something different here. And I have to have the ability to tell people, and I've already reached out to Bill Kristin, to Trident, and have said, we have got to have your assistance once we're full, to be able to turn people away, I just, we have to. So, what I would like to do is kind of try this, I'm not gonna say it's gonna work perfectly, but I'd like to try it for the next two weeks, so that by the 4th of July, we have some control in place. I do think it will draw, drive people to Bone Park. Bone Park, this last weekend, when they did tell people we were full and encouraged them to go over there, Bone Park was the busiest it's ever been, so I do think some people found it. However, I do think it's gonna drive people to the river corridor as well. And that will present another set of challenges, both with parking and with social distancing. We certainly, you know, I don't know at what point Boulder County Public Health said to Boulder Creek, you have too many people and must shut it down, but, you know, that may come to that if that's the next step. But I need to come up with some solution, or we're gonna lose some park hosts and potentially some park staff who are just not comfortable with what's happening right now.
Comments for Administrator Simonson? Trustee Lowell.
Yeah, Administrator Simonson, can you tell me what that reservation system would look like? Is it online, is that a piece of paper to the gate attendant, how do you envision that?
So, it works the same way, right now, we do our camping in our RVs by, it's called Reserve America. So, we would just add, I think there's 15 picnic tables to that system. So, we would do it the same way, and if you don't have a reservation number, you don't come in.
And is there overheads involved in that reservation system?
It's a software that we purchase every year, and then, the only other overhead is adding these 15 sites to it, but my understanding from the staff is that's fairly easy to do. And then, if we say, you know, no site can have more than 10, then we're following the state rules, plus we're putting some limits on the size of the groups coming in. But we, I've gotta come up with something that works, something else that might control the numbers.
I like, I like the idea, but again, it boils down to the gatekeeper.
No, they told, it does come down to the gatekeeper, you're absolutely right.
So, who, is there any chance of us getting an additional deputy? Or Trident people?
We've reached out to both the sheriff and Trident to try to get a guarantee that someone will be here. The other two options we've come up with that we're gonna reach out to are the Boulder County Park Rangers and the Rocky Mountain Rangers. Both of, all of which that have, you know, some degree of authority, the park ones especially understand how parks are supposed to operate. So, we are going to exhaust all efforts to try to get just the weekends, the park hosts can handle during the week, they just aren't getting any of those breaks, and they're really concerned, because they used to get a week off during each festival to give themselves a break, because you have to remember, these people are working seven days a week, 24 hours. So, I want to be able to, at a point in July, to let one park host go at a time, you know, and they say they can handle during the week, they just, they can't keep it up, it's just too much, too much, they said. They are not, they're working many more hours than what they're being paid.
Additional comments, Mayor Pro Tem Browning?
Would this reservation be seven days a week, or just weekends?
I guess we could, it could be up to us, for now, I would like to try it, I don't think it would hurt to try it. We're gonna be turning away a lot of people during the week, I think, until they get used to it. But some people just stand right there and just download the app and do it. You know, that works for most people. I'm open to consideration on that.
It's similar, it's similar to the Rocky Mountain National Park system that we've been doing the last couple of weeks, which is getting close to full for most of the summer already, but, and I think the other key question is, how would this be advertised, just town e-blast, which goes to mostly locals, but not all?
No, we talked about this, Dolores will reach out to the other clerks. You know, when people use our parking system, we get a credit card, we know their zip codes. So, we know there's a lot of people from Longmont, we know there's a lot of people from Commerce City, and a lot of people from Brighton. So, we were gonna reach out to their town clerks and see how they would recommend we get the word out to their communities that this is now a reservation system. And then, I need to figure out at Longmont, what's the best communication to, we haven't reached out to them. But finding out if it's best to, you know, do we, maybe the rest of this week, we start handing out a flyer to people coming in, saying, you know, reservations are gonna be needed as of this date? That's probably the best way, because most people are probably repeat visitors. But what I want to do is try to get this fine-tuned before the 4th of July.
I would say, how do we, how do we, how do we publicize the reservation system for the camping and the RV sites?
It's just people who camp, especially RVers, they just, they know that's a common system. And when you go on, when you go out to visit Lyons, you know, it pops up that we use Reserve America.
I don't know, I mean, my thought is, if our problem is just overwhelming crowds in the parks, as I think it is, is, I don't think we have any obligation, do we, to try to over-publicize and reach out to all over Colorado? I'd say, make it available on the website, send it out to e-blast, whoever's on our e-blast list, and I don't think we have to try to publicize or stimulate interest in the parks, there's plenty already. But I guess you don't want too many people showing up you don't know about.
We don't want a scene at the gate trying to turn people away.
I'd say, maybe try to give locals a head start. That's possible.
And then, I, you know, and we do this whole thing as, it's, this is an after effect of COVID. I mean, we have too many people unemployed.
Right.
People that, you know, we don't have anywhere to disperse the population on the weekends. They're, you know, they're not divided between movie theaters and malls and restaurants and wherever, they're all trying to come to a few places. So, I think we can, we can package all of this to be COVID-eligible under these funds, if we want to do that. And hopefully, can get some law enforcement or security on top of it.
I certainly think that's true, because one of the reasons that we're seeing the crowds we are is the outdoor enthusiasts who want, you know, water recreation, particularly on the weekends, can't go to Union Reservoir in Longmont now, because they closed it, they can't go to Boulder Creek because they closed it. And both of those, I think, were done because of COVID concerns, so COVID actions of Longmont and Boulder have spilled over into Lyons, I think that's pretty clear. And I'll just throw this out there, not for decision tonight, but for food for thought for future meetings. I think we need to take a serious look at closing the Black Bear Hole on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Just flat-out closing it, just like Longmont and Boulder have done with their overpopulated areas.
Trustee Rogan.
So, I think, if I remember correctly, it wasn't Boulder County Public Health that closed Eben G Fine Park in Boulder Creek, it was the Town Administrator or Council.
The city of Boulder.
Yeah, it was the city, so I think it might have been Jane Brogdon, but, so that's a possibility, you know, this, I think we kind of saw this coming, and I would 100% support spending funds on making it safer for our park hosts and our community, I think there's probably gonna be some pushback from local folks going, what, I can't go walk in the park anymore? You know, but I, it's what we gotta do, otherwise, we're gonna wind up having to close our parks too.
Well, how do you feel about that? If you have your, well, most of them are attached to vehicles, so if you have your local visitor's badge or ID.
Trustee Miller.
I think we should just, if we want to keep it open for locals, just to have a, if they have an ID or driver's license with the local zip code or Lyons address on it, I think that's fair, that's what we do during festivals. To let folks in when festivals going on, so I think that's pretty, people would just, you know, know that, I guess. If you're local, if you have a local ID, sorry, I just, I've had a day from hell.
It's been like that here too, Wendy.
Um, but I support you, whatever you decide, Victoria, in this park situation, I really think that it's gotta be controlled. I was at Riverbend today doing some work, and it was insane, the amount of people that were at, jumping off the jumping rock, and just all along that bank right there at Riverbend, and that's just a small portion of the park, so.
7:30 in the morning, Wendy, everyone starts at 7:30 and goes until 8 or 9 o'clock at night.
And this is, what, Wednesday, Thursday, this is Thursday, so, yeah, we're, you know, we're in.
This is Wednesday.
It's okay.
Okay. Like I said, um, so I think we need to get a handle on it quickly, otherwise, we're gonna be in trouble.
Trustee Lowell, you had an additional comment, sir?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Browning about the Black Bear Hole. Yeah, I was going to say, I agree with Mayor Protan Browning about the Black Bear Hole. To me, that place has, you know, next to Laverne Johnson Park, that has the second greatest potential for contamination and quite frankly, for disaster in the river. I, I fully support the reservation system. I think trustee Miller is also right that we do the same thing for locals as we do when Planet Bluegrass rents it. You show your, you show your license, showing your residency. It is for a walkthrough. You, 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 you're not going to have a picnic table. You're just going to be strolling through there. And the third thing I would say is the, the sign that we have coming into town, whenever we decide to launch this reservation system, in addition to the social distancing and face mask requirement, I would put up there prominent for anybody coming in that reservations required for park.
Yep. We, that's our plan is saying, we'll have to figure out how to word it, but we won't have much room. But you know, Laverne Johnson require, you know, requires reservation or something. We'll figure it out. But we plan to do that. And then we have a strategy too for shifting the staff at the gates as the welcomeers during the like eight. We, we start getting people around seven thirty and we're full by about ten fifteen or ten thirty. So having that person at the front giving the rules and where to park and all that and Trident in the back getting them parked so that they're paying. And then as soon as that's full, shifting that so that Trident's at the gates, turning people away and our staff can be working on, you know, hosting and implementing the rules in the park.
Any additional comments?
But I, I just need some, I just need administrative flexibility as we're trying to figure all this out. If I need to be flexible, if I need to close the park one day just to clean it all out and get all the signs up, let me do that.
Trustee care of us.
Okay, if this continues, can we just start closing the park Mondays and Tuesdays? Rest of the summer and rest of the fall?
You can.
I would say if this doesn't work in, in this first week, that we close the park, we close L M J Mondays and Tuesdays.
I think what you'd want to do is close, your RVs and campers are fine.
Yes, and, and tent campers are fine. I'm talking walk-in traffic, parking lot traffic, close it. Let, let people breathe, let the people that pay for their tent camping, parking, and the park hosts get a breath.
So maybe that's what we'll do for the, the Monday before the holiday is do something like that. We also might put out a little volunteer request. One of my staff said they might try to see if they can get some additional volunteers for Monday mornings for cleanup and Friday, Fridays, Mondays and Fridays. Because what they found is if there's litter on the ground, people are tendency to litter more. And if a park is nice, they're more likely to respect that. I also, we added an additional dumpster today to the parks. And we were going to add a porta potty at Black Bear Hole, but maybe I shouldn't.
Trustee, you had an additional comment?
Yeah, have we thought about closing the park entirely except for RVs and campers on the Fourth of July?
We've thought about it, but again, it's up, it's really your decision if you want to do that. Or we can just, you know, we can try to implement this and see how it's going. You know, knowing that, we were told that Estes Park and Longmont have both canceled their fireworks, which means people are going to be looking for a place to go now on the Fourth of July.
Well, I support your ideas in regard to this, Madam Administrator. And not only what you've spoken about tonight, but flexibility and being able to adjust as we move along because things may change. And if we have to even be stricter, then that's the direction we're going to have to go.
So did we have a, came an agreement on Black Bear for now or are we going to see how that goes? We could, Dave thinks we can get out those parking stalls, you know, the parking blocks and all of that to, to kind of help control it. We, we can't get the parking kiosks out. You know, that's going to take time and a lot of money if we decide to go that way. But how do you feel about that? I do think that what will happen as soon as we start this reservation is people will go to Bone. And then we're going to see that influx. So then we might have to go to reservations over there as well. But those park hosts aren't quite as burned out. And they said, you know, they're, they're okay with having a few more people.
Trustee Lowell?
Boy, this is a, this is a, this is a tough one because it's like, as soon as you squeeze one part of the bag, then the other one fills up.
Yep.
You know, when you, if, if we were to close LBJ, then they go to Bone. And then Bone's going to be overcrowded. So then they're going to be crowded and stretched between the Second Avenue Bridge and Black Bear Hole. And then it comes over to Lions Valley River Park. I mean, it goes on and on. I think I, I would, I would concur with at some point, maybe we just shut it down. I mean, you can see how it goes this coming weekend. That would be our only chance for experimentation because the very next weekend is the Fourth of July.
Yep.
I, based on what you've told me and based on what I've seen with my own two eyes, I think the Fourth of July in Lions, if the weather is decent, is going to be a nightmare. You might need four sheriff's deputies to keep order. I can just see all kinds of bad things happening. So perhaps we look at, would, would you have, you, would you have that reservation system in place for this weekend? Probably not, right?
We're going to try. We're going to, we're, we got to kind of get it out there, but we're going to, we're going to start.
All right. So we'll give, we'll get, we'll give it a shot. And we'll see if it makes any difference. But I would suggest that we might want to, to have a short, short Board of Trustees meeting, maybe next Tuesday, next Monday, and make the decision whether we're going to close it down for the Fourth of July. I can't see anything good coming out of it.
Uh trustee Miller?
Um, I personally think if you're going to do Reserve America for Laverne Johnson Park, that you should just do it for Bone too. It, I bet it takes ten minutes to put that stuff on the website to add it to the website. And I think you should just do it now instead of waiting.
Mayor Protan Browning?
I agree with trustee Miller. And in fact, having it on the website at the same time, as soon as Johnson Park shows is full, and there's another park sitting there on the website, that's the best way, I think, to encourage people to go to Bone. The town attorney's not on this. So I took the liberty of taking a quick look at section eleven dash four dash fifty A of the Lions Municipal Code, and it grants the town administrator broad authority to set rules for the parks. So it's great that you've informed the board and the board has been supportive, but you have inherent authority in the Lions Municipal Code to do what's necessary.
Um, I did, I just heard from Bill Christ and he said, I have posted for two additional deputies in the parks for Saturday and Sunday for the next three weeks. To see if we can get ahead of this. But they have to sign up.
That's great. That's good news.
But, um, okay, so I think I hear everything. The one thing, Black Bear Hole, if we close that, I think then people are going to also find the pond area. And up to date, the pond area is pretty much locals and some kayaking clubs. With the, with the water having the algae, I don't know if all of you know this, but we have posted that there is an algae present. It is being tested. And so at this point, you know, be cautious and be aware that it could be dangerous to you and your pets.
Be aware also that if you close the parking lot at Black Bear Hole.
They're going to be on the streets.
No, they're going to be on the highway and they're going to be on the, on the grass that we planted that we're, that we're hoping is going to come back. I mean, that's just, I'm sorry, but that's just the reality of the situation. So.
Well, I think if people park in areas like that, that are obviously not parking, we'll do what we did in Laverne Johnson and start telling some folks.
Yeah. Or take it in.
When we talked about closing Black Bear Hole, I don't mean just parking. I mean, no swimming in Black Bear Hole.
I know. And I, I think that's just going to push them down to around the ponds, to the next section.
Or October, November holes, which is a kind of a legal.
Those are busy.
How, how would you enforce something like that anyway?
No.
That's why I said it almost has to then become a public health issue. So if people are along the banks on the hard surface areas, I'm okay with that. It's usually small groups of families that are on a rock up crop. You know, it's when they start going on our newly vegetated areas or pulling out the grills on the grass areas that I don't, I don't care for that. But, you know, most people, as, as Kim said last night, most people are small groups of family just wanting to get out of the house and enjoy the river and the shade. But it's, it's just when they get too crowded.
I think you have a, in this case, a consensus and the authority to handle the situation, Madam Administrator.
I just want you to know I might spend a little more of your COVID money.
That's fine. And I, and I really like the idea of, of a, a couple of officers.
If you could do, that'd be great.
Because I don't think one officer is going to be enough.
Please let us know if no one signs up by Friday.
Okay. Okay, we will. I think, yeah. One of, Ben Rodman knew of a volunteer group that does that, who usually does river cleanup. And he thought he could get them together. But the park hosts feel terrible. They said, we haven't been able to do any of the small litter for over a month.
I'm talking officers. We don't get any officers signed up by Friday. Let us know so we're aware what's going to happen.
I will. And, and Trident will be, know by then too. And I gave them some very specific feedback that one of the people they sent was not effective. She appeared to be not comfortable at all with telling people the rules and that we did not want her back at that park.
Good.
We need someone who has a little more authoritative figure. You know who, Mark? Yeah. So, okay, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that because that was all new news. Monday, Tuesday apparently was pretty brutal on the park hosts with no reprieve in sight. So.
Excellent discussion and direction. Any further discussion, Madam Administrator?
The only thing is about this COVID money is I'm going to find out from DOLA if our current flood recovery staff that are used to these federal grants can be authorized to, to spend their time on this as well. Because all of this comes with paperwork and reports and the whole bit. And those guys know how to do it. So right now they're only authorized to work on flood recovery projects. So I'm going to try to get something in writing saying that they can also help with this hopefully. And if not, then we'll have to figure out. Our finance department is just Jill and our AP payroll staff just gave her notice yesterday. She's moving over to the Western Slope. So my whole finance department right now is Jill. So, yeah, I got to figure that out.
Comments by the board members?
I did say, let's post locally first. See if we have anybody out there that might be looking for a job. AP payroll is pretty generic, you know, can be taught. So watch, you'll probably be seeing that posting. And Dave was able to, to fill his seasonal today. So we'll have one, another helper in the park.
Good.
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
So move, sir.
Again, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. Are the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Be well, everybody.